All right, so, hi, everybody. Welcome. This is your first time here to Brooklyn Public Philosophers. It's usually a monthly public philosophy speaker series where philosophers from around Brooklyn and New York City and the greater Brooklyn area come to talk about their work. So this is the penultimate meeting of the series for this season, where you've got one more next month. There's an email list which you can sign up for if you want to find out more about the series. Anyway, I'm really glad that Frank Kirkland from Hunter College in the CUNY Grad Center can join us. He's the author of The Problem of the Color Line, a bunch of other works on philosophy and race. So if you could join me in welcoming our speaker.
Thank you very much. It's good to see a diversity in the audience, I mean, in terms of generalities. There are people here whom Brown resonates very strongly, and there's take it right first, or we're proud to just simply whisper why something is being celebrated. Fifty years ago, most, I think the anniversary was ten years ago, some weren't around when it passed you by. Yet, at the same time, if there's any Supreme Court decision that had impact on the issue of racial desegregation and the question of how one ought to understand the role of race in educational institutions, all right, Brown is it, and nothing has trumped it yet, even though it's, from my point of view, it's worth trumping. All right. So it's all, Du Bois would even say that himself. In any case, let me go on. If I slur or let me know, I'm trying to fight the remnants of coal. Brown versus Boyd's application is usually regarded as the most important Supreme Court decision regarding racial desegregation, educational opportunity, and so-called "race relations." So it covers a wide berth. Most people don't know that it's divided into two parts, Brown I and Brown II. People just think of Brown decision in 1954, but there's a subsequent decision one year later in 1955. More than to say without putting it right now, the 54 decision basically declares, "Naturally, racial segregation in schools unconstitutional." And in 55, Supreme Court gives the remedy, and that is, remedy entails eliminating all single race schools, okay? Most believe that Brown I, 54, regarding racial desegregation, racial segregation in schools is unconstitutional, and then Brown II supplied the remedy to what was regarded as unconstitutional in Brown I. But Brown I's position has both its supporters and its critics. This divergence in opinion affects how Brown I is read and how Brown II is to be read as a consequence thereof. If you are supporter of Brown I, you usually praise Brown I for removing racial segregation in the schools and for making possible to engender equal opportunity for all people. Most people have this view, that they think that's what Brown I promulgated. If you're a critic, you usually support Brown I's intentions, but you challenge the soundness of his reasoning and oppose the philosophy, i.e., in this case, with liberalism, on which he stands. So, if you're a critic of Brown I, you're deeming that all black schools is wrong because all black schools necessarily triggered inferiority and low self-esteem in black children. And the question you need to ask is, what has deemed harmful all single race black schools an outcome of de jure or de facto segregation of races? You can basically call that de jure, that is racial segregation by design, and de facto racial segregation by chance. Furthermore, critics assume, dispute the assumption on which the court is entitled to mandate a remedy, usually race, to what was declared unconstitutional. So you've heard this, for example, under by the current Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, John Roberts, who basically has made the argument that any attempt to make use of race to remedy racial discrimination is a remedy that's wrong, because you must make use of race in a way that the first step rendered unconstitutional, okay? That's a very narrow reading when you think about it. The issues around Brown II, the remedy speaks to the unclear and hidden character of what is deemed unconstitutional of Brown I. Some supporters, right, embrace Brown I on the basis of the view that the Constitution is colorblind. Individuals are judged by their words, speech, and characters, not by so-called dubious qualities of race. The Constitution...
Can you flip to the slide that you were reading?
Want to go back?
No, no. You're reading the next slide, aren't you?
No, this is, he's on the slide. He's on the slide.
Okay. From the same page, okay. Constitution views to end racial segregation in schools and cannot use race to remedy past harm or effects triggered by racial segregation. Brown II is hence invaluable. Again, that's Chief Justice John Roberts's position. Some supporters of Brown I agree that de jure racial segregation is unconstitutional and agree that the remedy for the harm triggered by subsegregation is constitutional, regardless of whether inferior education is an outcome of any racial group. Race may or may not be legally relevant in the remedy. The remedy extends beyond educational institutions. The person who held that view, right, would be Thurgood Marshall. We've promulgated this view. Third one, some supporters of Brown I agree to the remedy for the harm triggered by de jure racial segregation, but only if the remedy supports better educational measures. Race may or may not be legally relevant in the remedy. Remedy is restricted to and within educational institutions. The person who holds that view would be Chief Justice Sonia Sotomayor. And then finally, fourth, some supporters of Brown I agree that both de jure and de facto racial segregation are unlawful in both educational and other public institutions. Remedy extends beyond educational institutions for both forms of racial segregation. That, for the most part, is the view of pretty much every fair-minded, white-minded people of the general public, okay? Clearly, the gist and ambit of Brown I and Brown II cannot be split away, given the myriad interpretations of them stemming from the ambiguity of Brown I. So do Du Bois's views regarding Brown I and Brown II fall within this landscape, or do his views represent something else? My argument is going to be, it represents something else. To understand both the reasoning in Brown I and Du Bois's views on black education, a single question has to be kept in mind. This is the question right there. Does agreeing, is agreeing that racial segregation or racial segregation by design in schools is unconstitutional, does that mean that it signifies that all single race schools are unlawful, unjust, right, unjustified, right? How does the court address that question? How does Du Bois address that question? Court addresses it legally answering yes, right? So if you have de jure racial segregation, that, and you designate that segregation as unlawful and unconstitutional, that means that all single race schools are unconstitutional or illegal, right, unjustified, and court answered yes to that question. Du Bois, on the other hand, answers that question historically and comes up to answer no. Let's start with the legal reasoning in Brown I on the education of black children. If you look at the court's reasoning in Brown I, there seems to take the following of a certain kind of soludism. People know what a soludism means? The non-philosophers in the room, I know that philosopher is in the room, right? The non-philosophers in the room, right? You don't know, or do you know?
Don't know.
It's a form of inference in order to justify a conclusion, right? So what's going to end up happening, right, is that usually most soludisms start with a premise and an argument on the inference is such that you start to see whether the inference or the premise can provide you with support for the conclusion you want to use, okay? So this is soludism that I have up here, that seems to suggest how the court thought about this. First premise, Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution states, "All citizens regardless of race should be granted equal protection under law and due process," so they're constitutionally protected by law, right? Second premise, "Newly de jure segregation is a breach of A, it's a violation of A." Ergo, conclusion, legally de jure racial segregation is unconstitutional. That comes to rational, right? However, the court's reasoning did not take this form. Pay attention to the second premise. The court cannot rely on the validity of the second premise without making recourse to experience. The validity of the second premise had to be, A, in accord with past legal precedent, especially with Plessy versus Ferguson, and B, supported by empirical research. That's the only way the second premise could be sustained. Regarding the first one, the first point to that premise, right, Brown never denied the doctrine of separate but equal, right, never denied it. That's a, even today, segregation, separation and equality still maintained, still maintained. So Brown never undermined that. It declared rather that educational institutions were special, right, because of their mission and task to shape the minds and the character of youth and to protect youth's intellectual and emotional growth from harm. Brown never legally dismantled and invalidated it publicly. Plessy just still on the books. Second point, the legal reasoning in Brown entailed a silent, fundamental, yet disparaging presumption, namely that blacks were incapacitated in esteem and intellect due to enslavement and racial discrimination. In Brown I, that presumption was made viable by virtue of the court's appeal to a body of empirically psychological research affirming, one, the damaging emotional effects of racial segregation and isolation, and, two, the point to show that black schoolchildren have low self-esteem as a result of their racial isolation in racially segregated schools. That, by the work you may know, is what gave, was what made Clark's, Kenneth Clark and Mamie, right, give them prominence. Again, for those who have some history or age like me, right, this you would know. For those who don't, I would advise you to go to your teachers and ask them to talk to you about Kenneth and Mamie Clark. They're prominent public intellectuals. They both passed away, but, and Kenneth Clark, you're here, Anthony, you're torn at City?
Yes, I was in California.
Torn at City, California.
About ten years ago.
Even on a hypothesis that two racially segregated schools, one black and one white, with educational identical resources and services going in play, only black children would be debilitated by this racial isolation, never white children, never white children. So the presumption becomes, what is going on with that second premise, right? Because if you're condemning racially segregated schools, one has negative impact on certain groups, but none on another. Hence, in Brown, when you rule out racial segregation by design in the schools, that means that you outlaw all or predominantly single race educational institutions because they are harmful to black children in generating sentiments of inferiority and ultimately are impractical since they were not and would not be earmarked public funds. Question so far? I'll take questions.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Dr. Kirkland. I just want to be clear, because I'm not, so maybe you can help me out. Brown I, does that mean the jury of segregation, you know, in that bylaw, you know, they're overruling that?
No, Brown I just simply declared that de jure racial segregation was unconstitutional. So the issue is that the existence of single race schools, right, were regarded as unconstitutional. What would be the remedy? One year later, the remedy was, with the power of all deliberate speed, right, we were to eliminate them, but the elimination were to black schools, not to single race white students. Now, the issue you have to deal with is the fact that the counterbending strategy of what was going on prior to Brown was that being done by a lawyer from Howard, by, you know, Charles Hamilton Houston, who took Plessy, the separate but equal clause? He did a very strategic move. He demanded that blacks enter schools, right, and that if the schools had stopped them from entering, he said it was a responsibility of the state to create an equal one. No state legislature was going to make two sources of revenue through schools of that type. That's what forced integration, right? Now, what would be interesting would be taking Du Bois's view and taking Charles Hamilton's view and see where they diverge, well, that's under. But Charles Hamilton Houston is the mentor to Thurgood Marshall, right? And Thurgood Marshall implemented that strategy in Brown.
Did you also define Brown II from maybe just maybe...
Brown II is that which says what we've declared is unconstitutional has a harm. We must provide remediation for that harm. To start the remediation process, you must eliminate all black students.
Is that what de facto comes in by...
De facto, well, let's put it this way. When you say racial segregation by design, you're basically saying that you have decided to segregate according to a certain plan by design, so it's intangible. You're in there racially segregated by chance. There's nothing the court can do if it's racially segregated by chance, but you have designated that such schools be isolated by virtue of design of your social system, then that would be unconstitutional.
I mean, we have many de facto, this legacy of schools of Brown.
Well, this is something that could be said for later, insofar as you can ask that question about what the impact of Brown has been now. So, Brown I failed to claim that ruling out de jure racial segregation in the school was right, because such segregation directly violated the equal protection clause of the Fourth Amendment, even if disavowing the protection did not precipitate sentiments of inferiority among black children in single race and against race. That's to say, you could argue, there could be schools in which those students are in schools due to an outcome of segregation, but that doesn't mean that the schools in which those schools are separated from, from otherwise students produce education-harmed students. There's no argument in that one. That breaks up, right? But the belief by the court, right, took, the court took that belief and tested it. As far as I can see, Du Bois never repeated it to Brown I in wholesale fashion on this point. His critique thereof appeared rather suggestive than direct. Still, critics of Brown, I would probably say black critics of Brown, are quite reliant on Du Bois's thesis that there was a need for racially segregated schools for black children, and that schools did not necessarily breed low self-esteem among black children. So there's a lot of folk who basically adopt Du Bois's position, right? There's a need for racially segregated schools, but one has to be very, very careful what Du Bois had meant by that. That preview was promulgated throughout Du Bois's lifetime, when he addressed the matter of education of black youth. And his thesis was also reliant on social science as well, but not psychology, which rather was reliant on history. So critics of Brown I claim that the court's reliance on research concerning the deteriorating impact of low self-esteem among black children in all black schools is both wrong in the social science, as Du Bois would say, and unnecessary to their argument that racially segregated schools violate the equal protection law clause of the Fourth Amendment. Brown is, Du Bois would say this, okay? Still, we should be mindful, Du Bois's thesis was a conditional one, not categorical. That's a mistake most supporters of Du Bois tend to make. They fail to see that in Congress, that you, on the basis that a certain condition must be met, right? It doesn't say straight away that you need all black students. Ideally, what black youth at the primary, secondary, and tertiary levels needed, in his eyes, was quality education, period. He's speaking to his own education, which was taught now, right? He wasn't holding back on this, regardless of whether it was carried out in segregated schools or integrated schools. But as known as, quote, "the sort of public education creating the intelligent basis of democracy was lacking in America," end of quote, Du Bois argued for the necessity of single race schools for black children. I repeat this statement again, as known as the sort of public education creating the intelligent basis of democracy was lacking, that's the condition, was lacking, Du Bois argued for the necessity of single race schools for black children. That quote is taken from his essay, Does the Negro Need Separate Schools? And that was published in the Journal of Negro Education in 1935, nearly twenty years prior to Brown. Although Du Bois was not explicit, the sort of public education he had in mind operates on two different tracks, each one's own aim. One track, and even though I don't make explicit the philosophy behind all this, there is a philosophy going on here. What he has reminds another story, but there is, within the issue of philosophy, someone who does like that. I'll make that known. One track guides a black child to a being a citizen. Instilling in her the character traits she needs to endorse freely the good of her nation as her own, to regard herself freely and fully as part of the national unity. Here, the public school serves a political, in this case, democratic purpose, and ideally would be integrated. In short, this track leads to producing a citizen who enters the political wall already formed. But as already formed, a citizen brings with her beliefs, aspirations, and self-conceptions that are the result of long and complex learning processes undergone in her formative years. It is this other educational track, so to speak, that Du Bois takes as the focus of his thesis, setting down his position regarding the importance of separate schools for black children, a position from which he never wavered. Du Bois's thesis is attending to the striving for esteem in schools, wherein the esteem striven for can be had only comparatively, that is, only in relation to the esteem bestowed on one by others, and wherein the esteem sought can be measured only through the eyes and opinions of others. Per se, nothing is wrong with this. But on line to segregation, the bestowal of esteem on black children would entail a malignant propensity to fuel with passionate intensity the incentive for forms of inequality, even with political support, since the esteem sought in relation to others would be measured by those taking themselves as superior or indifferent to others. This is much defined in the classroom, where the person who bestows esteem on children on the basis of their attempts in this drive is a teacher. Now imagine black children being in a school where the teacher, supported by segregation, is called upon to make evaluations on students. And a good case in point about that phenomenon, you already have seen, and that person is in the form of a Reddick Lynch. If you go look at her biography, as a high school student, she was valedictorian of her high school in South Carolina, yet the school, and that was in nineteen, what, sixty-seven? It was way back, it's in sixty-seven, where the school decided that she had to share the valedictorianship, because it would be improper for a black child as valedictorian to come on the stage alone. So she was denied that. And that's the kind of phenomena that Du Bois is trying to speak to and address. Outside of single race schools, most black children at the time would, Du Bois states, receive an education, quote, "worse than pillable," or would be equally... receive an education, quote, "worse than payable," or would be, quote, "crucified rather than educated," end quote. The estimations they received, therefore achievements or competencies, would not be deemed valuable or worthy in some respects, would not be defined in relation to the worthiness accorded others, and would not be worthy in the eyes and judgments of others. Oh, the philosopher, by the way, uh, that I'm following here, right, is Rousseau, Zemeal. Rousseau, Zemeal, because he's concerned about how to educate children, right? Wherein estimations about children affect the merit in which they become citizens in a state. And so the issue is that it doesn't just simply make sense to educate students in a way since they become proper citizens, it becomes important that they educate them in such a way that they appreciate striving for excellence and confidence and be evaluated in a way in which nothing that they seek to achieve is stifled. DeBois himself makes recourse, quote, for himself at the time. In short, schools outside of single race ones would deny or mitigate a black child's esteem by not relying on actual matters as the basis for deserving at least commensurate esteem from others. Separate schools for black children look at the opposite and mentally beneficial itself. DeBois is also critical, excuse me. DeBois is also critical of the NAACP in this essay, which stands against separate single race schools for black children. NAACP was trying to take on the Charles Hampton Houston tragedy of Thurgood Marshall. That's why they'd be interested to ease of DeBois and that track. He claims that it stands to me to legal decisions unable to distinguish, as in the NAACP, be unable to distinguish blatant and imminent racial segregation against legal education from conditionally necessary separate black schools safeguarding the esteem of black children from such segregation. Question to ask, how present was DeBois? Twenty years later, in 1955, DeBois delivered a speech entitled, quote, "Two Hundred Years of Segregation," end quote, in which he broadly laid out the history of public education as racially segregated despite brief and deep interpretive periods of integration. Although he lightly touches on the history of public educational track discussed in the early essay in 1955, DeBois's emphasis in this speech is the history of the public schools and their numerous attempts to serve a democratic purpose in the context of racial segregation. I believe this is why, in this essay, he holds out hope for legal education in the incremental advance of the black vote, securing gradual increase in the curbing of segregation by race in public schools, rather than safeguarding the esteem of black children in the school's Finally, DeBois's 1957 article, "What is the Meaning of All Deliberate Speed?" That phrase, "all deliberate speed," was mentioned, was used in order to establish the need for an immediate remedy towards declared unconstitutional, okay? Again, that essay is brought near history, but a history not of the phrase's meaning, but the times and context in which the phrase was used. The phrase signifies the government's promise to remedy the harms black people have undergone from state-approved racial segregation. And for black people, the history refers to the repetition of the promise rather than the implementation of the remedy. So what he's trying to show you is that that phrase, "all deliberate speed," is rhetorical. It was not the first time it was used, and it's been used fiercely with no effect. DeBois interprets Brown two to fall within the history of repeated promises to legislate against racial segregation, since, according to DeBois, the promises to legislate against their offense and to enforce such legislation have been neutralized by the customs and sentiments of segregation perpetrators. In effect, outlawing de jure racial segregation in schools because such segregation directly violated the equal protection clause of the Fourth Amendment and harmed black youth was insufficient for generating the political and social will necessary to end legally racial segregation in a school. So Brown two was needed, promised, and eventually ignored. If Brown one were correct, Brown two would effectively say, given DeBois's article, that black children would have to continue experiencing substandard education and sentiments of inferiority until an avenue could be fashioned that would eliminate these problems without jeopardizing, jeopardizing white students. So sixty years later, it's still a wait for remedy. I hope this is what you take from what I've laid out. First, Brown one compels you to attend to the meaning of racial equality and equal educational opportunity. Through DeBois, it challenges us to come to grips with the value of striving and esteem for identities and a tolerance in society, right? That emphasis is there. And indeed, my argument would be, any and every child in the school, that should be a main concern. Brown one would not be read as, A, granting legal authority to bring about racial segregation, it should be read as merely be prohibiting compulsory racial segregation in public schools. DeBois should be taken as being critical of Brown one, but never in reprimanding it since he read it in terms of to be, not to end. DeBois's thesis does not commit him to the view that single race schools would be intentionally and freely created and embraced. It does commit him to that view only if other schools violate, right? Single race schools do not. That's the condition. DeBois vehemently disagrees with the thesis that black children develop sentiments of inferiority in all black schools. Finally, DeBois neither provided a comprehensive account nor a detailed analysis of issues surrounding sentiments of inferiority in black children in terms of striving and esteem. Rather, he gave an ample and generous description of it in a number of his writings, a description of the experience of those exposed to reestimating some others when engaged in a quest for Human beings have this quest from a young age, which involves an unlimitable comparison of, can't avoid it. It is not just that the estimation can be egalitarian, but that it can be implained and demoralizing as well, to which I gave analysis in this presentation. Finally, DeBois knew that part in an egalitarian form of the sentiment in black children that is educating black children to, A, conceive of themselves as equal, the more standing to all others, and B, while seeking excellence and concomitant esteem that comes in teaching from self. That's what public schools should be doing, right? Succumb during his long life. For a black school without succumbing should de jure racial segregation. That, thank you very much.